Um, Father God, we come before you. That first and foremost. Uh, we thank you for allowing us to see this new day. We thank you for this Bible study that you prepared for us, Father God. Um, we come before you acknowledging that we're flawed in our ways, Father God, so we seek, we seek it. We are seeking your counsel. Um, we ask that you, you know, allow us to come before your throne, Father God, with with clear minds and clear hearts, Father God, receiving what you have before today. In your son Jesus' name, we pray, amen.
Amen, amen. Thank you, thank you, beloved nephew. Okay, beloved brethren, tonight we're going to review Luke chapters seven and eight. And Lyndon's going to take us into Luke chapters nine and ten. And in this beloved brethren, this is affectionately known Luke. Matthew, Mark, Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John are affectionately known as the four gospels. And what they're actually doing is giving us a front row seat. Of the activities of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ and his three year ministry. Luke actually took us to the days of prior to our Lord's birth. Um, the announcement was made. To Mary by the angel Gabriel. And that helps us to see that she was told that she was going to have within her womb. The Lord Jesus Christ. Um, beloved brethren, also the angel Gabriel spoke to Elizabeth. And Zacharias, John the Baptist's parents and told them that. They were going to bear the forerunner, which is John the Baptist. Beloved brethren, one of the topics that we touched upon. Is this thing about, um, when should a child be aborted? At what stage or what stages, at what, um, point that. You can safely say you could be aborted, the child could be aborted without being murder or something to that effect. But as I explained a couple of weeks ago, you know, they say in the first month, third month, up to even the ninth month, they even said. Um, I think I heard one reporter said even as a child is entering into the world, you can go ahead and abort it. It wouldn't be considered murder. Well. Scripture takes care of that. First of all, you have to understand that our. I think we're, I think we're called the Western culture. I think we're the Western culture. I'm not even really sure. Western culture has very little value concerning life. Um, in the East culture, and I'm speaking primarily about Jews and even Arabs. They put a high, a high value on life. Uh, they put a high value on, on their babies unborn and. Um, born and, and, and little ones as well. So much, so much so to the point that even throughout the history of the scriptures. We've never entertained or it was never entertained abortion and all this other nonsense. Jeremiah goes on to say, even before I was formed in the belly, thou knewest me. So when you have that kind of information. How can you determine that you should be able to abort the child and everything would be peachy keen and okay? No, it's never okay. So just to sum it up, it's murder. First stage, first three months, second trimester, first, second, and third trimester, no matter what you call it, it's murder. So scripture helps us to appreciate that God has the answer to all of life's questions. Comments and concerns, whereas God will not leave us in the dark. Fishing for information, trying to figure out how to do this, or trying to figure out how to do that, trying to get around this, or trying to get around that. No, scripture definitely does not leave us scrapping in the dark for answers. That God will clearly, clearly. Give us, um, help and understanding and, and he'll let the way be so. That we'll have no room for error, we'll have no room for mistakes, that we'll have no, um. How could I say, no leg to stand on in trying to carry out our, uh. Desires or to carry out, um. Whatever, whatever it is that we desire to have, um, in, in, in the, um. In that which we desire. Uh, as Brother Lyndon and I were discussing. Um, and Brother Lyndon brought to my attention, he was saying. Brother Scott, um, they do these things because they feel that the child is going to be an inconvenience to them. And a lot of times people, they, they do it. Because they don't want to be inconvenienced. They don't want to have this child to mess up their program. Or to interfere in what they desire to have in life. So beloved brethren, again, scripture helps us to appreciate. That God values life even before it begins. Now I'm going to take you just really quick before we, uh, get into tonight's review. Now I'm going to take you to a scripture that almost. Well, I can, I'm not, I won't even use the term almost. I will say that has a beginning. Even before Adam and Eve. And beloved brethren, that scripture that I'm speaking of is found in Revelation, chapter thirteen. Let me make sure I got my scripture right, um. Give me just one second. The thought that I'm looking for is, right, Revelation, chapter thirteen, verse eight. Now listen to this. This is a beginning even before Adam and Eve. Revelation, chapter thirteen, verse eight says. And all that dwell upon the earth shall worship him. And this is the beast. This is the, the beast that's, that's, that's. In, um, in line and in connection with Satan, false prophet, um. So once again, the old that dwell upon earth worship him, that is a false prophet. Whose names are not written in the book of life of the lamb slain from the foundation of the world. So we know that Jesus Christ. Was our Savior, was our Lord, was our Redeemer even before we were created. So again, beloved brethren, no one has a leg to stand on to promote. The issues or the topics or the subjects of abortion. With that in mind, beloved brethren, we're going to take a look at the review. Of Luke chapters seven and eight. Verses one through ten of Luke chapter seven, and I'll just briefly, uh, cross. Those, um, scriptures. There was a centurion, uh, Jesus is now into the land of Capernaum, and there was a centurion. Who had a servant that was dear to him. He was sick and he was ready to die. And when this centurion heard of Jesus, he sent unto him, him, uh, sent unto Jesus the elders of the Jews. Beseeching him that he would come and heal his servant. And when they came to Jesus, verse four, they besought him instantly. That he is worthy for whom he should do this, for he loveth our nation and he hath built us a synagogue. Beloved brethren. A question that I ask as we're moving into these verses. Who is dear to you, whether it be a coworker, teacher, student, family member, neighbor, friend, whoever? Who is he or she that is dear to you that you should reach God on their behalf? Beloved brethren, that should be a question that we all could ask ourselves. Who is it that's dear to me that I should go to the Lord on their behalf? As we touched upon. Especially in Mark, excuse me. We touched upon Mark. We saw that there were different family members that besought Jesus on behalf of their loved ones. We had the father who besought the Lord Jesus Christ because his son was possessed with a demon. We had the four men who tore a roof in the hole, uh, tore a hole in the roof and lowered his friend down to Jesus. So beloved brethren, this sets for us the pattern to set, to, 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 to help us to say. Who is it that's in our lives, family members, relatives, friends, that we could beseech the Lord for in their behalf? This is something for us to really dearly think about, beloved brethren, because I'm very sure, I'm very sure. That we have someone in our families or friends or neighbors that we could beseech the Lord on their behalf. And it's not a thing of, of, of thinking that we're better than them, or what makes you think you could beseech. The Lord on my behalf, when I can go on my behalf on my own. Well, you gotta understand, if a person comes at you from that angle. That right there shows that their relationship with God is a little sketchy. Because if you are beseeching God on their behalf, they should be saying, yo, thank you. I, I, I appreciate it. I really, I really, I really, I really appreciate it. There should not be any, um, dismissiveness in them, or, or they should, they should not feel that. Um, they're not qualified to go to God on their behalf or, or, or themselves. It should be an attitude of gratitude. Beloved brethren. Luke used an excellent term to, to, to describe the condition of the centurion's term, of this, this, the centurion servant. A term of which we are all struck with. And that is every human being, even our best. We're all sick and we're all ready to die. Now, a person may say, wait a minute, Brother Scott, hold on. I ain't sick. I just came from the doctor. He gave me a good deal of health. Truth, very true, very true. But the sickness that I'm talking about is that we're all sick with sin. Scripture says, for all have sinned and come short of the glory of God. That's the sickness that I'm talking about. I'm talking about the sickness that Adam and Eve got started, which causes us to. Have to be met with that gruesome monster called death. All of us. One hundred years from today. Will not be here. Even a mother and, uh, a, a husband and wife that just got pregnant right now as we're speaking. Their child with a likelihood, and I'll use a, 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 a better number than that, a hundred and twenty years from now won't be here. So that means they're all going to die. But what did he do? The centurion, he besought our Lord Jesus Christ. The one that he knew from hearsay could heal this servant from his sickness. So beloved brethren, I beseech those on your behalf, you beseech God. On my behalf, I beseech God on your behalf, we beseech God on behalf of our family members, relatives, and friends. And asking God to save them. Ourselves as well as others from that. Which is facing all of mankind in that we're sick and we are ready to die. And that God will show us mercy. And that he will be kind and loving to us and bring us into his home. Because remember. John three sixteen, for God so loved the world that is all of mankind, that he gave his begotten son. That we will not perish but have everlasting life. So beloved brethren, as we're having this study in your mind. And even at the end of the study, there should be someone, you know what? I'm going to beseech God on my brother, my sister, my mother, my neighbor. My girlfriend, my boyfriend, my husband, my wife. And I'm going to ask God to show them mercy and to bring them from the brink of death. Physical death, if, if, if someone is in that position, and definitely spiritual death. Beloved brethren, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Was mirac, was not, I'm sorry, not miraculously, he was amazed at this centurion's faith. Because as Jesus was coming to the centurion, the centurion sent out servants and said. It is not even necessary for you to come to my house. So let's get a, a, a mental picture like, uh, of that. It's like, say, um. My doctor, I live in, uh, I, I, I live in, um, um, on Dickens Street off of Mott Avenue. And my doc, my doctor, he's a few blocks away. So let's say he's coming to my house and my daughter meets him and say, Doc, it's not necessary for you to come to my house. Just say the word. And my dad would be healed. That is the kind of faith, that is the kind of blessed faith. That this centurion had was saying that he didn't even have to, Jesus didn't even have to come into his physical house. Jesus was wonderfully, he wonderfully admired the faith. Of this one, of this centurion, that is centurion. Wasn't even a Jew, he was a Gentile. And let's just say for, for all intensive purposes, he wasn't even a, 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 a believer. But yet, his faith had him on the horns of this wonderful belief. With amazed our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Now, it wasn't something that our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ had already seen forthcoming. But this is written for our example, to show that though we, and I'll say it. A lot of people, there are, there are a group of people that call themselves the black Israelites or black Hebrews. Because they feel that if they, uh, take that title or take that term, that they'll have that closer walk with God. No, 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 no. Remember, Jesus said, I am the way, the truth, and the life. No man. So that means Jew, Gentile, Israelite, Hebrew, no man's coming unto the Father. Except they come through our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. So beloved brethren, I take comfort in that, because I'm a Gentile. I don't have any Jewish, um, or Israelite heritage in, in my bloodstream. No, I'm a, 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 a regular old Gentile. But because I believe in the Lord Jesus Christ, I'm going to have life and I'm going to have it more abundantly. And also beloved brethren, maybe this centurion has come across a scripture which is found in Genesis, chapter twelve, verse three. Where it makes mention of, God said he would bless those that blessed Abraham and his seed. And he would curse those that cursed Abraham and his seed. This, this is the Genesis, chapter twelve, verse three. And I would bless them that blessed thee and curse him that curses thee. And they shall be all families of the, excuse me, and indeed shall all families of the earth be blessed. So again, maybe the centurion was familiar with that passage of, at that time, um, the Torah. Maybe he was familiar with that passage of the Torah, where it said God would bless those that blessed children of Israel. And he loved the children of Israel because they were saying that, that he had built, the centurion had built a synagogue for them. Beloved, turn with me in your bibles, to Psalms one oh seven, verse twenty. A most beautiful scripture. Once again, Psalms one oh seven, verse twenty. And there it reads. He sent out his word and healed them and delivered them from their destructions. Now, remember, the centurion said, Jesus didn't even have to come to his house, just. Speak the word and the servant would be healed. Beloved brethren, Psalms one oh seven, verse twenty has a dual meaning. And that dual meaning is. As we just saw, the centurion. All Jesus had to do was speak the word and the servant was healed, and it was so, because scripture helps us to appreciate. That. He was, he was healed. Verse ten. And they that were sent returned to the house, found the servant whole that had been sick. So Jesus just spoke the word and the servant was healed. Now, God sent out his word. And who is that his word that he sent out? He sent out very good baby. He sent out the Lord Jesus Christ. Listen to John, chapter one. Verses one, fourteen and twenty-nine. Once again, John, chapter one. Verses one, fourteen and twenty-nine. And there it reads, in the beginning was the word, and the word was with God, and the word was God. Verse fourteen. And the word was made flesh and wealth among us, and we beheld his glory, the glory as of the only begotten of the Father. Full of grace and truth. Verse twenty-nine, the next day John sees Jesus coming unto him, and say, behold, the Lamb of God is taking away the sin of, of the world. So beloved brethren, once again, Psalms one oh seven twenty. Has a dual application in that Jesus just spoke the word, the centurion's servant was healed. The centurion's, right, servant was healed, and then God sent forth his word, which was made flesh to the Lord Jesus Christ. To heal us, who would believe in the Lord Jesus Christ from our sins and our sickness of death. What also impressed our Lord was that this Roman centurion. He, in an authoritative, in an authoritative, in an authoritative position. Knew that Jesus, as an authority, when he says, come, come, and those will come. When he say go, those will go, because that authority, the centurion, he had that type of authority and that type of power. Listen to John, chapter twelve, verse forty-nine, of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ's authority. Go ahead, bubu, nice and loud. Absolutely, and, and, and very good, very good point, baby, because when Jesus told. This is saying, the woman caught an adultery, go and sin no more. What do you think she did? Absolutely, absolutely. So that was a part of this authority in giving her the freedom to go and sin no more. Because she was forgiven of her sins. Very good point, bubu. John, chapter twelve, verse forty-nine, from the English Standard Version. This is Jesus speaking, but I have not spoken in my own authority, but the Father who sent me has himself given me a commandment, what to say and what to speak. So once again, this Roman centurion, he had authority. And he recognized that Jesus has authority, and that authority is given him from the Father. Beloved brethren, verses thirteen to fifteen, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, as he was continuing on. And he was, went to a city called Nain, N-A-I-N. There was a woman, a widow, whose only son had died. Now, the importance of that is, they didn't have like. A welfare system like we have here in America, um, I'm very sure he didn't have any life insurance and, and, and things of that nature. So she was already a widow, she lost her husband, the only son that she had who was a source of income, he had died. So this woman was in dire straits. Believe you me, when she was weeping, she wasn't crying over, oh, what am I going to do? I'm not going to get fed, I'm going to get the bills paid. No, she was crying because she lost her son. But our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, he took the whole picture into consideration. And he said in verse thirteen, and when the Lord saw her, he had compassion on her, and said unto her, weep, not. Beloved brethren. That has personal application for me. And the reason why I say that has personal application for me is because. When my mom left December twenty twenty-one. Indeed. Indeed. I did weep. So I can readily identify when our Lord told this widow not to weep. How comforting his words were to her. Because he told her not to weep. Prior to him raising her son from the dead. So those were words of comfort and consolation to her. And she had no idea that our Lord was going to raise her son from the dead. But in her telling her to weep not, showed that Jesus was presenting her with compassion. Beloved brethren, Psalms one sixteen, verse fifteen says the following. Precious in the sight of the Lord is the death of his saints. Beloved brethren. That's one that's honestly above my pay grade. Honestly, it's above my pay grade. The reason why I say that is this. God considers it precious when one of his loved ones, Lazarus, Mary, Martha. Matt, Mark, Luke, John, just a name of few. When these ones fell asleep in death, they were all considered precious in God's eyes. We somehow don't have that same view. The reason why I say that is this, because we love, we love someone that we built up with before with, that we had a relationship with. That we, 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 we trusted, we, we, we come to fellowship with. We come to, uh, 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 intimate relationship with. And for that one to, to, to cash out, so to speak. It's, 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 it's very, very difficult to see the preciousness involved in that. We also have to remember, that scripture says, my ways are not your ways, or my thoughts are not your thoughts, and my ways are higher than your ways. So God sees that these faithful ones, again, Matthew, Mark, Luke, John. They finished their journey and they finished successfully. No longer do they have to scrap and, 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 and as Paul says, strive to get into the narrow gate. That's over with. They're now be accept, that they're, they're now being accepted into God's kingdom, hook, line, and sinker. So I guess that's where the thought of preciousness comes into sight. It's a little less precious because we don't have those persons with us. I, 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 I bless my wife, and, and please don't misunderstand what I'm saying. But sometimes I just miss my mother, because my mother and my wife, they both have their different roles and their different positions. But like I said, it's, it's quite difficult to see the preciousness of a loss of a loved one. It's really difficult. We're not God. So when scripture says precious, in the sight of the Lord is the death of one of the saints. We have to believe it, we have to accept it, and we have to move forward, because knowing this. When my mom and I are reunited in the future, it's going to be a eternal relationship. It'll be a different relationship. We'll be brother and sister. But it'll be an awesome relationship, no more death, no more pains, no more heartaches, no more sorrows. Go ahead, bubu, nice and loud. My daughter said, exactly, my daughter said, like, like to take my mom for example, she's, she's. She has no more heartaches, no more sorrows, no more pain, no more debilitating health, all that's come, all that's ceased. And we already had our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ on the Mount of Transfiguration in his glorified body. And our loved ones will be in a glorified body. So that's definitely comforting to us to know. That our loved ones, we will be reunited with them, listen to first Thessalonians, chapter four, verse fifteen to eighteen. But this is saying to me by the word of the Lord, that we which are alive and remain unto the covenant of the Lord shall not prevent them which are asleep. But the Lord himself shall descend from heaven with the shout, with the voice of the archangel, with the trump of God, and the dead in Christ shall rise first. Then we which are alive and remain shall be caught up together with them in the clouds to meet the Lord in the air, and so shall we ever be with the Lord. Therefore, comfort one another with these words. He will call us out of our resting place unto himself. They saw it. They believed it. We are yet to see it, but even still, we presently believe it. Beloved brethren, verses sixteen with twenty-two of, of Luke chapter seven. Now, at this point, John the Baptist is in prison. The importance of these verses is to help you and I in our journey and in our walk. Brother Lyndon and I, we spend the week, um, from Saturday to Saturday. Brother Lyndon and I, we spend the week, um, from Saturday to Saturday. We spend the week getting our notes together, our review, we even powwow with each other. And in that powwow, we need some encouragement, we need some strength. We need to hear words of hope. Beloved, Brother Lyndon and I need to be encouraged as much as Brother Lyndon and I are attempting to encourage y'all. I'm saying that to say this. Verses nineteen and twenty of Luke chapter seven, listen to this. And John, this is John the Baptist, calling unto him two of his disciples, sent unto Jesus, saying, are you he, or are we to look for another? When the men would come unto Jesus, they said, John the Baptist sent, sent us unto you, saying, are you he, or are we to look for another? Now, beloved brethren, a person may say, huh? John the Baptist is asking such a question, yes, yes. He was in prison, you have to understand that John felt, he, he felt, let's just say. A double, what's, what, what, what we would say. A looking out for me, because not only was Jesus his savior, Jesus was his cousin. And you know that we would do all within our might and in our power and our ability to safeguard all of our loved ones. Especially family. So when John asked that question, are you? The lamb that I already said, behold, the lamb was taken away the sin of the world, are we to expect another? And we're getting beloved, Brother Lyndon and I sometimes at the end of our studies. We sometimes have that question, did we get you over right, Father? Did we present you right, Lord Jesus? Was we found acceptable in your eyes? Now, we're doing this completely on faith. John did it on faith along the sight, because you gotta remember, John baptized our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. John felt that he was unworthy to unlace Jesus's shoes. John, when he was in the mother, in the womb of his mother Elizabeth, he leaped for joy when he came in the presence, when she came in the presence of her cousin Mary. John had all of this, but yet he still asks, it wasn't faithlessness, he just had doubts. So beloved brethren, if you sometimes have doubts, if you sometimes have questions. That doesn't mean that you, you don't belong to God, that doesn't mean you don't belong to Christ. It very well means you do, it's just that you're asking sometimes from this carnal angle, Father. Am I doing, am I doing night well, am I pleasing you? Am I found acceptable in thy eyesight? It's nothing wrong with asking those questions, beloved, so please do not get it, um, um, twisted. If you ask those questions, do not think that you are a doubter, or that you're faithless, or that you don't belong to God. Because remember, the great John the Baptist, he himself asked those questions. But as he was asking those questions, listen what our Lord and Savior did. In response to that, verse twenty one, that same hour, Jesus cured many of their infirmities and plagues and evil spirits. And he gave unto them, that were blind sight. The lame walk, the lepers were cleansed, the deaf heard, the dead are raised. The poor had the gospel preached to them. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ said, go that way. And tell John these things that you stood here as an eyewitness. Because the things that John had witnessed, I'm sorry, the things that John's disciples had witnessed. Were spoken of. Forgive me, um, beloved brethren, were spoken of. In this, in this scripture, beloved brethren, please forgive me, I have my notes a little bit spread out. So Isaiah. The things that John's disciples had witnessed, were spoken of in Isaiah chapter thirty five, verses five, six and eight. Listen to this, Isaiah thirty five, five, six and eight. Then the eyes of the blind shall be opened, and the ears of the deaf unstoppable. Then shall the lame man leap like a deer, and the tongue of the mute sing for joy. The waters break forth in the wilderness, and streams in the desert, and a highway shall be there, and it shall be called the way of holiness. The unclean shall not pass over it, it shall belong to those who walk on the way, even if they are fools, they shall not go astray. So beloved brethren, the things that were foretold in Isaiah, and I'm very, I'm very sure that, that John was familiar. With the writings of Isaiah. When his disciples saw Jesus perform those acts, went back and told John, and that was simply so. To strengthen his faith. Now, beloved brethren, what I liked, in verse eight, where it says, even if they are fools, they should not go astray. The reason why that blesses me. The reason why that statement, even if they are fools, they shall not go astray. The reason why it blesses me, because even after. Coming in the position of being a Christian, calling upon Jesus Christ and relying upon God. I still walked as a fool. So. Beloved brethren, understand this. That that blessed me as well. Because Isaiah spoke thousands of years ago, of me, being a fool. As I was, but yet, I did not stray from God my Father. Beloved brethren, verses twenty six to twenty eight helps us to appreciate. When it says, what, what, what did you go out to see, a prophet? Yeah, I say unto you much more than a prophet. This is of he who is written. Behold, I send my messenger before thy face, which shall prepare thy way before thee. For I say unto you, among those that are born of women, there is not a greater prophet than John the Baptist. But he that is least in the kingdom of God is greater than he. Verses twenty four, uh, twenty four and twenty five. And when the messages of John were departed, Jesus began to speak unto the people concerning John. When you went out to the wilderness, what were you looking for, a reed shaken with the wind? Beloved brethren. When we, uh, travel upstate, and sometimes we see those big cornfields and those reeds. And when the wind blow, you see them shift to the left, you see them shift to the right, John wasn't that way. And beloved brethren, you and I should not be that way either. The wind should not be shaking us, the wind should not be moving us to the left and to the right, in other words, we shouldn't be su- uh, 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 um. Subject to the whims, or the, or the indecisiveness of the culture. If John the Baptist was alive today, Brother Lyndon had sent me this clip, and he was saying that even churches. Are bending to this homosexual nonsense, and he's right. Cause I was reminding him, Lyndon, you remember telling me that there was this church? That had the homosexual banner outside of this church? Yep, and instead of me, um, assuming, let me tell you brothers exactly what I did, instead of me assuming. I got the church's phone number, and I called, and I spoke to the pastor. And I said, uh, pastor, um, I was driving by in the city, and I saw. Your church that had the, uh, the, the homosexual banner, the rainbow and everything. Uh, did I see that right, listen, we talked to the pastor on the phone, he said, yeah. I said, okay, so, explain that to me. He said, well, we just want the community to know that they're welcome to our church, I said, absolutely, that's exactly what you're supposed to do. But now, once you welcome them to the church, what is your steps of progression afterward? Oh, no, we just leave them as is, so I said, well, wait, 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 let me ask you something. My wife is standing right here, she can confirm everything I'm telling you, so let me ask you something. If I, as a person who got a gunshot wound, going to the emergency room, and the doctor sit me down to look at me and say, okay. We're not gonna put any alcohol, to clean the wound, we're not gonna give you any peroxide, we're not gonna try to, um. We're not gonna try to, uh, put a tourniquet on there to stop the bleeding, uh, we recognize that you were shocked, sir. But we're not gonna do anything to try to save your life. I said, is that a worthwhile hospital, um, sir, yes or no? He said, of course, that's a worthless hospital. So I said, well, you have to categorize yourself as being worthless, if you want to tell a homosexual to come in, have a seat. Listen to the word, go back out there, the same way he was. The same way he was, you're worthless, yes, yes, I told him that, I said, you're absolutely worthless. And then I hung up the phone, so. If John was living today, John wouldn't go for that nonsense. He would tell him, if you remain in your sin, what did our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ tell the woman in John chapter eight? He said, woman, where are thy accusers? He said, Lord, there are none. He said, neither do I accuse you, but what did our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ tell this woman afterwards? Go, and sin, no, more. So any church, any congregation, any pastor, any preacher, any Bible student, any Bible teacher. Is a worthless, something else. If you invite a sinner into your congregation, and you're telling them not, to change. Yeah, you're worthless, absolutely, absolutely. Verses twenty nine to thirty five. These religious leaders of our Lord's day, they were fickle, then they're fickle today. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is saying to them. Verse thirty one, and the Lord said, we're unto, we're unto, like the men of this generation. And to what do they like? They're like the children sitting in the marketplace and calling one to another and saying, we have piped unto you, and you have not danced. We have mourned to you, and you have not wept. Verse thirty three, John the Baptist came neither eating bread nor drinking wine, and you say he had the devil, now remember. John the Baptist, as a Nazirite, one of the stipulations was, he could not drink wine or strong drink. So John the Baptist, he honored that Nazirite vow, and he wasn't drinking, um, wine. Verse thirty four, the same man is coming eating and drinking, and you saw, behold, he is a gluttonous man, a wine bibber, and a friend of publican incendies. Beloved brethren. That part where it says, the children on the marketplace saying, we piped unto you, and you didn't dance, we mourned unto you, and you have not wept. Let me, let me, let me try to put a picture of that for you. When I used to be a DJ, I was DJing this, um. It was a, um, it was an auditorium, school auditorium, so back in the days, the jam was, um. Let's dance to the drummers' beat, and I put that on, they were standing there like a wallflower, I was like, wow. Alright, so I put on, um, the slow jam back then was, um. Um, what was it, what was? Flow, 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 oh, flow, flow, forgive my singing, but that was, that was a song back in the day. Now, I put that on, and they didn't slow dance, so I was like, what, what? I'm putting on a fast jam, you're not dancing, I'm putting on a slow, slow jam, you're not, you know, um, slow dancing with one another. What, what, what do you want? So that's what our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ is saying here. We piped unto you, you have not danced, we mourned to you, and you, you have not wept. They're the same way today, beloved brethren, they're the same way today. They do not know how to be pleased and know how to be satisfied because of a truth, they don't belong to God. They really don't belong to God, because if they did, they would do better than what they're currently doing. Again, John the Baptist drank no wine, they weren't satisfied with him. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ drank wine, they weren't satisfied with him. What gives, you have to ask the question, what gives, at what point? Do we please you? Verses thirty eight to fifty brings, uh, Luke chapter seven to a close. Now, there's scripture says, um, Simon, a Pharisee invited our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ to his home. And there was a woman in the city, verse thirty seven, listen to verse thirty seven, behold, the woman in the city, which was a sinner. When she knew that Jesus sat at meeting the Pharisees' house, brought in an alabaster box ointment, and stood at his feet behind him weeping and began to wash his feet with. Wash his feet with tears, and then wiped him with the hairs of her head and kissed his feet, and anointed them with the ointment. Yeah, exactly, exactly. Now, Simon having his private thoughts. Listen to verse thirty nine, now when the Pharisee which had bid in him sword, he spake within himself. Saying, this man, if he were a prophet, would have known who, and what man or woman this is that touched him, for she is a sinner. Beloved brethren. If you never knew before. You'll know it now. Can God read our mind? Listen to Luke chapter seven, verse thirty nine again. Now, when the Pharisee which had bid in him sword, he spake within himself. So that means he was having his inward thoughts, beloved brethren, understand this, and please get this into your thinking. God can read your mind, he can read your thoughts. So you probably say, if I don't say it out loud, he can't hear it, too late. He can hear it, he has heard it, and he will do something about it. Well, how do you know, brother Scott? Listen to verse forty, and Jesus answered and said unto him, Simon, I have something to say unto thee. And I'm, I'm, I'm very sure at this point, Simon was like, huh? And he said, master, say on. And then our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ goes on to talk about, there was a predator who had two debtors. One owed four dollars, and the other one owed forty thousand dollars. Now, the debtor, I mean, the predator, he forgave both, remember, one owed four dollars, the other one owed forty thousand. And I gave y'all this as an illustration before. Um. You owe me four dollars, you owe Brother Lyndon forty thousand. We, we, and, and, we forgive you of the debt, who are you gonna love more, me or Brother Lyndon? You're gonna love Brother Lyndon more, because he forgave you of a larger debt. This woman, yes, she was a sinner, it wasn't hidden, it wasn't denied, and again. When Simon said that she was a sinner. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ never corrected him, and never said, Simon, you have no right to judge him. As a matter of fact, listen to what Jesus says in verse forty three. Simon answered and said, I suppose that he to whom he forgave most. And Jesus said unto him, thou hast right to judge, so again, beloved brethren, I sent y'all out in the text this week. God is not telling us to not judge, but he's telling us that when we judge, judge with fairness, with equity and with truth. So again, this woman, yes, she was a sinner, now, I personally think, it's not proven. But I'm, I personally think that this woman here at Simon's house, at the feet of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. I think that this is the woman from John chapter eight, the reason why I say that is this. She was caught in her sins, she was brought to our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ in place at his feet. I'm excuse, brought into the midst of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Those who are accusing her, they all had to leave, because she couldn't have been involved in adultery by herself. There had to be somebody there that was partaker of her adulterous actions, so they all left out of guilt. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ says, I don't condemn you. He said, go and sin no more, that's when he ended the conversation with her. But when we move over here, the scripture says, when she learned that Jesus was at the Pharisee's house. She came and brought an alabaster box ointment, which is a very, you can, you can pretty much compare that to, um. I don't know if it's still popular, but, um, Elizabeth Taylor, um. She had some expensive perfume, so whatever the expensive perfume is today, I really don't know what it is. What was, Elizabeth Taylor had some expensive perfume, yeah, okay, yeah. My wife is, yeah, so Elizabeth Taylor, so you can compare that to the, the perfume. My wife is, yeah, so Elizabeth Taylor, so you can compare that to the perfume that Elizabeth Taylor had, so this woman she bought. And she was so grateful that our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ did not condemn her. That she came to him weeping. With joys, with, 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 with tears of joy and gratefulness. She washed his hair, washed his feet with her tears, using her hairs. And listen to what our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ says to her. Verse forty-eight, thy sins are forgiven. See, that wasn't said to that particular woman in John chapter eight, what was said to her was neither do I condemn thee, go and sin no more. But here in Luke, it says, thy sins are forgiven, so that's why I comfortably feel that that's the same woman. Again. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ says. To whom he forgave the most will love the most. Y'all probably say, brother Scott, brother Lyndon, I mean. You're telling me, brother Scott, that you and brother Lyndon, y'all just don't stop Saturday night. Sunday, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, y'all just seem to go on and on with these studies and reviews and. Um, talking about the ministry and the gospel, why? And I already powwow with my brother Lyndon, so he doesn't mind me saying this. Y'all wanna know why we're so involved in what does say the Lord? Because brother Lyndon and I were huge sinners. And we were hugely forgiven, and that's why we act on such huge works. We do this because we've given much, and we love much. Brother, beloved brethren, just really to run through eight really quick. Um, verses eleven through fifteen of chapter eight. It says, uh, there are four types of soil, and these four types of soil represents the hearts of men. And how they, um, receive the gospel. There are those who, you hear it. It takes the root, there are those who hear it, they rejoice for a moment. But it doesn't have any, any, any depth. Um, there are those who. They hear the word, but because of the cares of the world, Satan comes and snatches from them, then there's that good soil that hears the word, that acts upon it, and they do something about it. Beloved brethren, verses nineteen to twenty-one, where Jesus says. Who are my mother, my, my, and my brothers, beloved brethren, this is an invitation, this is a beautiful invitation to us, to us. From our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Jesus says, verse twenty-one, and he answered and said unto them, my mother, and this is Luke chapter eight, my mother and my brethren are they which hear the word of God and do it. Beloved brethren, you are our Lord's mothers, you are our Lord's brothers. Verses twenty-two to twenty, twenty-two to twenty-five, our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ calmed the storm, now. They were in the ship with our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Beloved brethren, do you sometimes feel that as a Christian, you know, I just went to church. I just had Bible study. I just got to share the gospel with a stranger. And I just got a check, I just got this letter in the mail that I owe thirteen thousand dollars. That's a storm. That's a same comparable storm to what the disciples were feeling when they were in the boat with our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, as he calmed that storm, he will also calm your storm. Believe you me, cause I was there. Lord, I just did this in your name, Lord, I just did that. And I'm still receiving headaches, heartaches, and sorrows. What our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ has, he told that storm, peace be still, he will tell our storms, peace be still. Beloved brethren, bringing this, um, to a close. The man who was possessed with demons. Now I think I told y'all a story one time. I was on the. The one train. And I'm at Fifty-Nine Street Columbus Circle, I got my doors open. The grid closes doors, I see everybody running out of the car, so I open up the doors again. Woman comes to my window, sir, there's a man in there, he's naked, that's why everybody's running out of the car. So I step back to looking there, and on the train, in broad daylight, it was about five o'clock in the afternoon, which was rush hour, yes. This man, he wasn't even wearing socks. As naked as, day he came out of his mother's womb. Beloved brethren. You gotta know, that this man was demon possessed. Listen to what the scripture says here. Listen to what the scripture says here. In Luke chapter eight. Luke chapter eight, verse twenty-seven, and he went off to land, they met him, out of the city of certain men, which had devils long time, and wear no clothes. Beloved brethren, that man at Fifty-Nine Street Columbus Circle, who was naked, and he was, this was a grown man. And he was walking on the platform as if, as if he was coming from a hard day's work, and he wasn't batting an eye. You have to understand that this man was demon possessed. And beloved brethren, you gotta feel sorry for persons like that, you don't. Beat that person up with words and, and threaten him and things like that, you gotta feel sorry for him. Because you have to know that that man was demon possessed. So beloved brethren, when we come across situations like that, you can say a word of prayer, um. I fall into one station, there's a woman sitting on a platform, as naked as a jaybird. You gotta, once again, understand that these people, yeah, you probably say, well, they were so high on drugs, yes. I'll give you that, but you gotta also understand and know that these persons were demon possessed. Because persons in their right mind do not do things like this. Now as I'm bringing verse, uh, chapter eight to a close. Jairus' daughter, she was dying. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, on the way to care for her, he was met, Brother Lyndon well covered this last week. The woman who had the bloodthirst issue, where her faith was just so that if she touched the hem of his garment. That bloodthirst issue would stop, and it actually did. As Jesus was on his way to Jairus' house, they brought word that his daughter had died. Our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ went to the house nonetheless. There were those who, where our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ said, weep not, she's just asleep. They laughed him to scorn, he dismissed him, he only brought him to the house with him. The, the, um, James, John, Peter, the mother and the father. They were all crying, they were all weeping, and rightly so, again, beloved brother, again. The scripture clearly says, precious in the sight of God is the death of one of his saints. I almost can't say that. I, and, and, beloved brethren, I'm not talking from a mouth of doubt. I'm talking from a mouth of reality, because what is the scripture saying right here, verse fifty-two? And all wept and beheld and bewailed her. But Jesus said, weep not, she is not dead, but sleeping. Verse fifty-three, they laughed him to scorn, knowing that she was dead, that's when Jesus dismissed him out of the room. But our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, verse fifty-four, he put them all out, took her by the hand and called, saying, may arise, and her spirit came again. And she arose straightway, and he commanded to give her meat to eat. Beloved brethren. I know that one day, my loved ones, my mom, my dad, my sister Marva. Many of my loved ones, my grandmother, my wife's grandmother, her mom, her dad. We know that these ones will be raised again. Do you have a lack of faith that you cry now? No, no, you don't, no, you do not. So don't hold back those tears, cry well if you have to. It's not a lack of faith, it's just that you miss these loved ones, and God well understands you. Remember, God being the almighty God that he is, in his eyes, they are asleep, in our eyes, they are dead. But with his belief, with his faith, we know that he will raise them up from the dead. And beloved brethren, you can have that same kind of faith. Even though you haven't seen it yet, but no, it will come to fruition. Brother Lyndon. Brother Lyndon?
Yes. Yes, I'm here. On, hear me?
Yes, 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 sir.
Right, well. Um, as mentioned before, uh. Gospels of Matthew, Mark, Luke, and John. They're all from different angles, different perspectives, but it's all focused on the truth. Which is our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the one and only. And, um. Again, we're gonna see, um. An intercession. Um, for healing. We'll also see the commission of, uh, the disciples. And it should be translated to our lives. When we are disciplined, we're not gonna be easily offended. And if we do see an argument brewing, we're not going to get entangled. In that argument. And I'll read Second Timothy. And that is what helps me. You gotta remind yourself each and every day. That if you're not born again, you're the walking dead. And we'll see Jesus make that remark when someone claimed to say that he's willing to follow him. And he distinctly said, uh, let the dead bear their own dead. So. This applies to all of us, I know that we have families, we have, uh, our jobs, we. Uh, we have homes to take care of financially. In early, uh, studies, the disciples, they, they, they left everything, they left their livelihood, they left. They were fishermen, they left their boats, and that's to follow Jesus Christ. And, uh. I'm not gonna, uh, go into detail, but just imagine you're following the Messiah. And then all of a sudden, he's dead. You forfeited everything to follow him. How could it be hope? What I'm trying to best, um, explain is. It's gonna cost us, I mean, it, it's gonna cost us. And yes, it's tempting to, um. Try and indulge in the fleeting pleasures of this world, um, hang out and, and try to enjoy and have the so-called life. And not go through the pressure of, uh, being persecuted, killed physically. Being ridiculed. Being falsely accused. Just. Being hated. It's not really comfortable. But thankfully, um, Jesus encourages us to understand that. If the world hated him, first, they're going to hate us. And the more and more we say, I wanna be like Jesus, okay, you really wanna be like Jesus? Um, you really wanna be, you, you have to suffer. And that's the, um, price we all have to pay. And, uh. I think that, uh, for the, I think when we were taught. These false teachers said that, okay, your, your problems have ended, Jesus is your source. And you're not gonna go through any turmoil, you're not gonna have any hardships, you're not gonna. Now we realize from these gospels. And that's why we have these Bible studies, to be constant reminders of the truth. We need to be reminded of the truth so we can be mature. And I know it's not easy. But it's worth it. You have to look at it as. Finding this lost treasure, this treasure of Jesus Christ. For all our lives, he thought it was, there was no hope, there's no way I can get to heaven. Jesus doesn't even think about being, uh, life is terrible. And, uh, well, I'm gonna try to make the best of it. And now, when we receive encounters from Jesus Christ, and now we see answered prayers, we see his hand delivering us. Now we see, okay, this is what the journey is all about. I'm going to use this journey and take advantage of this journey because I know it's designed for me to be conformed. In the image of Christ. Whatever he has experienced, I will have a little taste of that experience so I can relate to him. The only way we can relate to Jesus is to sufferings. Okay, let's, uh, start with, uh, the Great Commission of the Seventy-Two. Well, not the Seventy-Two, but not yet, but it's gonna, he's gonna send out the Twelve. Getting a little excited about that, but. Alright, let's go to Luke chapter nine, when Jesus. Had called the Twelve together, he gave them power and authority to drive out all demons and to cure diseases. And he sent them out to proclaim the kingdom of God and to heal the sick. He told them, take nothing for their journey, no staff, no bag, no bread, no money, no extra shirt. Whatever house you enter, stay there until you leave that town. If people do not welcome you, leave their town and shake the dust off your feet as a testimony against them. Again, we see ruin. And you're really excited, you get caught up in a moment, you wanna prove this person, you know the truth, you're defending the truth. And it's not sinking in. Jesus warned us. In Matthew, uh, chapter seven, verse six. And I'll read it as a reminder, and I have to be reminded because sometimes you hear things and you just, you, you, you get startled. I can't believe they don't understand. But don't get caught up in arguments, that's what the devil wants you to do, because we cannot be alike if we. Uh, getting tangled in many foolish arguments. But here is what, these are the teachings we need to eat every day. Matthew, chapter seven, verse six. Do not give dogs what is sacred, do not throw your pearls to pigs, if you do, they will trample them under their feet and turn and tear you to pieces. If you see someone's not, is not registering in their minds, you're telling them the right direction, you tell them earnestly with all your heart. And all the forces of your emotions are being poured out. Please. It's not, uh, cold-hearted, it's being realistic. Leave them. Hey, you know, smoke is bad for your health, oh, well, you know, I'm just gonna go to the store and buy some cigarettes. Alright, well, you know what, have a nice day. You, you, you just have to keep moving, if they, if you see that they don't wanna be helped, they don't wanna be healed. Move on. Shake the dust off your feet. Uh, I'm gonna go to Second Timothy, chapter two, verse, uh, I think it's twenty-nine. And, uh, it's a, it's, it's definitely, uh, medicine to me. Because I know I used to argue with almost every Jehovah's Witness. I argued with the black Israelites on Arshim Parsons, where they used to. Try and recruit people and. But the, the list goes on, but thankfully God has shown me to. To flee from that. And this is, um, what we need to, uh, listen to. Alright, I'm going to, uh, go to Sixth, Second Timothy, chapter two. Uh, verse twenty-two. As nor, as a matter of fact, verse twenty-three. And to the end of the chapter. So, Second Timothy, chapter two, verses, uh, twenty-three to the end of chapter two of Second Timothy. It is written. Don't have anything to do with foolish and stupid arguments. Because you know they produce quarrels, and the Lord's servant must not be quarrelsome. But must be kind to everyone, able to teach, not resentful. Opponents must be gently instructed in the hope that God will grant them repentance, leading them to the knowledge of the truth. And that they will come to their senses and escape from the trap of the devil. Who has taken them captive to do his will. You see the dead, if they don't have the spirit. They're not going to listen. Jesus clearly said. He was a murderer since the beginning. And the truth is not in him. We read in First John, chapter one, verse eight. The truth has to be in you to make, help you realize, wait, I, I got a condition, I need to repent from this. And Jesus said to the Pharisees, I'm telling you, I am the Messiah, but every time I tell you, you don't believe. You know what the reason why you don't believe me? Cause you do not belong to me, you're not my sheep, you belong to your father, the devil. Let me read to, um, to you First John, chapter one, verse eight, and listen very carefully. Because it's, it shows you that the only ones who listen to God. Are on the side of the truth, they're born again. Please stop wrestling with pigs and dogs, you're only gonna get muddied. And you're only gonna bring shame. To your efforts. Listen closely. Chapter one, verse eighteen. If we claim to be without sin, we do not receive, we do, we, we deceive, let me see that, we'll read that again. If we claim to be without sin, we deceive ourselves, and the truth is not in us. If we confess our sins, he is faithful and just and will forgive us our sins and purify us from all unrighteousness. The truth has to be in you. You cannot love if you don't have the truth in you. You cannot believe if you do not have the truth in you. That's why Jesus clearly mentioned to Nicodemus. No flesh can inherit the kingdom of God, you must be born again. So if you see that you have believed, consider pure joy is a gift, it's not earned. This faith. You, by the grace of God. So we gotta be very, very, very thankful. Okay, so let's move on from the dust being kicked off our feet. Let's continue this journey. Okay, so they set out and went from the village, went from village to village, proclaiming the good news and healing people everywhere. Now Herod, the trench arch, the trench arch, heard about all that was going on, and he was perplexed. Because some were saying that John had been raised from the dead, others that Elijah had appeared. And still others that one of the prophets of long ago had come back to life. But Herod said, I beheaded John. Who then is this I hear such things about? And he tried to see him. When the apostles returned, they reported to Jesus that what they had done. Then he took them with them, and they withdrew by themselves by a town called Bethsaida. Where the crowds learned about it and followed them. He welcomed them and spoke to them. God and healed those who needed healing. Late in the afternoon, the twelve came to him and said. Send the crowd away so they can go to the surrounding villages and countryside and find food and lodging. Because we are in a remote place here. He replied, you give them something to eat. They answered, we have only five loaves of bread and two fish, unless we go and buy. About five thousand men were there, but he said to this, his disciples, have them sit down in groups. Of about fifty each. The disciples did so, and everyone sat down. Taking the five loaves and two fish and looking up to heaven, he gave thanks and broke them. Then he gave them to the disciples to distribute to the people. They all ate and were satisfied, and the disciples picked up twelve baskets of broken pieces that were left over. We see that this is an illustration of obviously Jesus being the Creator. How did he know those fish? How did he know the bread? Another illustration, twelve baskets of bread for leftover, didn't he promise us? That the thief only comes to steal, kill, and destroy, but I've come that they might have life and have it more abundantly. You will have Jesus more abundantly. It's also illustrated in Psalm twenty-three, when it is mentioned. You anoint my head with oil, my cup runs over. Surely goodness and mercy shall follow me all the days of my life. You see Jesus, you see God is focused on the inside, we're gonna have this joy sprung up within us. Like springs of water. No matter what the circumstances are on the. But you know, phony preachers, they swindle people, they say your banks are gonna be spilling out money and. You're gonna have prosperity all over the place, and you're gonna have this breakthrough and that breakthrough. So that will help you understand the distinction between the. You see, the devil thinks that outward beauty. Outward appearance. Is more important than inside beauty. And inside appearance, your character. You need to have this to be recognized, you need to have that to be respected. You need to have this career so people will speak well of you. But that's not the case with Jesus. And that's why it's written, didn't God choose a poor? In this world to be rich in faith? And to have, to have the inheritance for those who love him? So think about that. Now, once when Jesus was praying in private, and his disciples were with him, he asked him. Who does, who do the crowds say I am? They replied, some say John the Baptist, others say Elijah, and still others that one of the prophets of long ago has come back to life. Well, what about you? He asked, what do you say I am? Peter answered, God's Messiah. As I mentioned earlier, you're gonna see the gospels mentioned, and you see a perspective of Luke. And now I want you to see the perspective of Matthew. With the same question, and we, we, it's gonna open up, you're going to see. That when you are a child of God, you're going to receive revelations, you can receive confirmations. And this is God reassuring to you that you belong to me. And I'm gonna manifest myself through the timely words. Of the scriptures. You're, you're going to say, I, this is mind-boggling, I just heard that the other day. You say, you hear somebody speaking to you, and you're just thinking about that very same word. So that's, um, God showing you that. The ones who come to Jesus are taught by the Father, and those who are taught by the Father are in his favor. So when Jesus asks the same, you know, same question, who do you say that I am? And, uh. Peter boldly said. Um, said this, and, uh, it's something to be. Looked upon in, in, in high esteem. So let's go to Matthew, chapter sixteen. Again, who do the people say the son of madness? This is verse thirteen, sixteen, verse thirteen going down. They replied, some say John the Baptist, others say Elijah, and still others Jeremiah, um, or one of the prophets. But what about you? He asked, who do you say I am? Simon Peter answered, you are the Messiah, the son of the living God. And Jesus replied, blessed are you, Simon, son of Jonah, but this was not revealed to you by flesh and blood, but by my Father in heaven. And I tell you that you are Peter. And on this rock I will build my church, and the gates of Hades will not overcome it. I will give you the keys of the kingdom of heaven, whatever you bind on earth will be bound in heaven, and whatever. Earth will be loose in heaven. So we see that. All these scriptures are tying in. We see that we, born-again believers, we redeemed, adopted children, you know, we're no longer orphans. And the Father is going to reveal things that the, um, people who are in flesh and blood will not understand or even receive. And we're gonna, um, encounter that again in Luke chapter ten about the babes. And always God's good pleasure to reveal to the babes and not to the wise and learned. But we're gonna see here in, uh, John, chapter six, again, Peter. Re- receives a revelation from the Father about the true identity of Jesus Christ. Jesus Christ confirms, listen, this is revealed to you, not by flesh and blood, yes, that is true, I am the Messiah. So let's go to, uh, John, chapter six, verse forty-four. No one can come to me unless the Father who draws them. And I will raise them up at the last day. It is written in the prophets, they will be all taught by God. Everyone who has heard the Father and learned from him comes to me. We see Moses asking that same question. Please, I want to be in your favor, teach me your ways. Teach me your ways, and now we see that if we are being taught by God. That means God is drawing us to the Messiah, Jesus Christ. And we will receive favor from the Lord. Why? Because. He orchestrated. This. Relationship with his son. And obviously, his son is going to intercede for you so you can have. Our relationship with the Father. And it's not gonna be by your own merit, it's not gonna be by your own efforts, so your works is all. By grace. When you're born again, the Father's gonna look up. He's looking upon his son. We reflect to Christ. Let's go to Exodus, chapter thirty-three. And I love this because now you, you, you go in full circle, when you take a journey in the, the scriptures. It starts to open up and explain to you. That's why we need the Holy Spirit to walk us through all truths. Here we go again. Exodus, chapter thirty-three, verse thirteen. Exodus, chapter thirty-three, verse thirteen. If you are pleased with me, teach me your ways, so I may know you and continue to find favor with you. Now, that may seem like a mustard seed, but now when we take another journey to Proverbs, chapter eight. It opens up, and we see that if we are in the Father's favor, we're gonna be not only taught by him. We're also going to be drawn to Jesus Christ. So that's a beautiful, awesome, wonderful privilege. To be loved, to be taught, to be protected. To have favor. Whether it's of. Guys or any. So let's go to Proverbs, chapter eight. Now think about it, those who are taught by God, come to me. And whoever comes to me, I shall know is cast out. Here we read. Blessed are, this is, um, Proverbs, chapter eight, verse thirty-four to thirty-six. Blessed are those who listen to me, watching daily at my doors, waiting at my doorway. For those who find me find life and receive favor from me. Those who fail to find me harm themselves, all who hate me. Death. So we see here that those who find me find life and receive favor from the Lord. We see that, that, um, Moses said, if you continue to teach me your ways. Teach, show me your ways, teach me your ways, so I can remain in your favor. So now when you make the connection with John, chapter six. Um, I believe forty, um, six, forty-four. It makes sense. If you continue to teach me, that means I'm in your favor, Father. And if I'm in your favor, favor, that means I'm being drawn to the Savior, Jesus Christ. So the Bible is just not a historical book, it's a guide. It, it will help you see the truth clearly. And each and every time we have a Bible study, I kid you not, we can read the same words. Now, what's a flesh and a carnal understanding? It seems repetitive and redundant, but every time we eat the word so we can understand the truth. Better and better. So I'll read again, John, chapter six, verse forty-nine, to just, just keep this in sync. And I know sometimes we tend to wander and forget. John, chapter six, verse forty-four. No one can come to me unless the Father who sent me draws them, and I will raise them up at the last day. It is written in the prophets, they will be taught by God, everyone who has heard the Father and learned from him comes to me. Uh, we see that having a relationship with Yeshua HaMashiach is a gift. Your faith is a gift, but now when this gift is given to you. We have the free will decisions to cultivate that gift. And obviously, that'll be done by the help of the Holy Spirit. What we see when David fought his battles. Says, my, my God came against my enemies like water. The Lord has gone against my enemies by my hand. So we have to co- cooperate with the Holy Spirit. You know, it's just like looking for a job, we can't just sit there on a couch, yes, the job's gonna come to me. They're gonna knock on my door and say, hey, God has some great news, you got a job, you gotta go out there. Fill applications, cure our codes, go online, word of mouth, networking. But you're cooperating with the Holy Spirit, you got to keep in step with the Spirit. We're not robots. Though we do not have sovereign choice. We're not robots. Okay, so let's go further down here on this journey. I mean, uh, this is a constant reminder to me, sometimes, you know, you, you, you think that, uh. What's more to learn with this? If God's infinite, you're gonna be forever learning, and that's the beauty of this journey. So now, as we go down, Jesus strictly warned them not to tell anyone. And he said, the son of man must suffer many things and be rejected by elders, the chief priests and the teachers of the law. And he must be killed, and on the third day be raised to life. Now, in the book of Matthew. Saint Peter, and Peter kind of reminds me of myself, he wonderfully proclaimed that Jesus is the Messiah. And then later on, his flesh emerges and says, this is gonna be fall for you, and, and Jesus turned to him and says, get behind me, Satan. You have been a stumbling block to me, you're concerned about the will of man instead of the will of God. So, we realize. So we realize, yes, we have this wonderful spirit within our hearts. But again, we still have a flesh that is in constant battle against God. And that is why Jesus insisted, if you want to follow, deny yourself daily and carry the cross. This flesh needs to be crucified to this world. And I know the cravings are enticing. They are overwhelming. The sensual pleasures of sin, I'm not going to lie to you, feel very well. These again are physical sensual pleasures. They're not permanent and they will not benefit you in the end. So we, as disciples, we have to be disciplined to look past that sensual pleasure, that sensual feeling. And again, that's why we have Pride Month. People have, have feelings for those who are concerned for lifestyles. They believe that since they're so kind, they, they help in so many other areas of life. They're respectful in other merits of life. And they seem to just turn their eyes away from the truth because of their feelings. So we have to keep our feelings in check. And we have to because if you do not focus on the truth, you will definitely fall for the lies of the enemy. So whoever wants to be my disciple must deny themselves and take up their cross daily and follow me. For whoever wants to save their life will lose it. But whoever loses their life for me will save it. What good is it for someone to gain the whole world and yet lose their very self? Whoever is ashamed of me, in my words, the son of man will be ashamed of them. When he comes in his glory and the glory of the father and of the holy angels. Truly, I tell you, some who are standing here will not taste death before they see the kingdom of God. Now, what he meant by that is that some of the people here are not going to taste death until they see my resurrection. And uh, later on in the Bible, we, they mentioned that some of us, some of us are still alive after we, we've seen the resurrection of Jesus. Some of us who've been, received that encounter are still alive. About eight days after Jesus said this, he took Peter, John, and James with him and went up onto a mountain to pray. As he was praying, the appearance of his face changed. And his clothes became as bright as a flash of lightning. Two men, Moses and Elijah, appeared in glorious splendor, talking with Jesus. They spoke about his departure, which he was about to bring to fulfillment at Jerusalem. Peter and his companions were very sleepy, but when they wake, they saw his glory and the two men standing with him. The men were leaving Jesus. Peter said to him, master, it's good for us to be here. Let us put up three shelters, one for you, one for Moses, and one for Elijah. He didn't know what he was saying. While he was speaking, a cloud appeared and covered them, and they were afraid as they entered the cloud. A voice came from the cloud saying, this is my son, whom I have chosen. Listen to him. When the voice had spoken, they found that Jesus was alone. The disciples kept this to themselves and did not tell anyone at the time what they had seen. In other verses, Jesus again said, do not make mention of this to anyone. God was very insistent on, on, on the timing of his plans. Very intricate. And that's why we need to wait on the Lord because he has perfect timing and we do not. The next day when they came down from the mountain, a large crowd met him. A man in the crowd called out, teacher, I beg you to look at my son for he's my only child. A spirit secretly screams. It throws him into convulsion so that he foams at the mouth. It scarcely ever leaves him and is destroying him. I begged the disciples to drive it out, but they could not. You unbelieving and perverse generation, Jesus replied. How long shall I stay with you and cut up with you? Bring your son here. Even while the boy was, even while the boy was coming, coming to the ground in a convulsion, but Jesus rebuked in pure spirit, healing the boy and gave him back to the sky. They were all amazed at the greatness of God. While everyone was marveling at all what Jesus did, he said to his disciples, listen carefully to what I'm about to tell you. The son of man is going to be delivered into the hands of men, but they did not understand what this meant. It was hidden from them so that they did not grasp it and they were afraid to ask him about it. An argument started among his disciples as to which of them would be the greatest. And Jesus known their thoughts, took a little child and had him stand before him. Then he said to them, whoever welcomes this little child in my name welcomes me. And whoever welcomes me welcomes the one who sent me. What is the one who is least among you all, who is the greatest? We are servants. The positions that are not held in high esteem according to the standards of this world are waitresses, garbage men, janitors. These positions of servant hood is held in high esteem in the kingdom of God. We see busboys. They're not thought too highly of. And the list goes on. Maids, housekeepers, babysitters, nannies. In God's eyes, if you make yourself last and serve others, you are the greatest. Jesus forfeited everything and became to be a servant. He was not seeking to be served, but he came down to earth to serve in his ministry. That's what ministry means. Ministry is servant hood. You minister others. You see scriptures when he was weak and he was filled with anguish, the, the angels came to minister to him. Masses said, masses said, John, we saw someone driving out demons in your name and we tried to stop him because he's not one of us. Do not stop him, Jesus said. For whoever is not against you is for you. As the time approached for him to be taken up to heaven, Jesus um, resolutely said, and he sent messengers on ahead who went into Samaritan, to a Samaritan village to get things ready for him. But the people there did not welcome him because he was heading towards Jerusalem. When the disciples, James and John, saw this, they said, they asked, Lord, do you want us to call fire down from heaven to destroy them? But Jesus turned and rebuked them. Then he and his disciples went to another village. As they were walking along the road, a man said to him, I will follow you wherever you go. Jesus replied, foxes have dens and birds have nests, but the son of man has no place to lay his head. He said to another man, follow me. Well, he replied, Lord, first let me go and bury my father. Jesus said to him, let the dead bury their own dead. But you go on and proclaim the kingdom of God. Still another said, I will follow you, Lord, but first let me go back and say goodbye to my family. Jesus replied, no one who puts a, a hand to the plow and looks back is fit in the kingdom of God. I've heard this family comes first. I've heard other sayings. God helps those who help themselves and all these false statements. Uh, we, we thought they were speaking the truth. But God really means what he says. You want me? Forfeit your family, your mother, your father, your, your kids. You don't, you're not worthy of me. I know the hearts. Without me inside their hearts, they're going to rip you to pieces. They're going to betray you. They're going to, they're going to abandon you because you, you couldn't beat their their standards, so to speak. You couldn't, you couldn't provide for them the way they wanted to be provided for. I mean, look around and see, you see Dr. Dre, you see Puff Daddy, you see all these guys, uh, Kanye West, so all them paying child support that seems outrageous, but that's what happens. You know, it's beautiful at first, tastes good at first, but then the reality checks in. So um, it, it seems cold hearted, but it's the truth. Some people have forfeited their belief because of their emotional, their emotional ties to a family member. Oh, you know, Jason, he, he loves men and he's a great guy. I love him. He's my brother. I mean, I, I believe in Jesus. I believe he walked in the water, but you know, God could be understanding. He understands. He, 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 everybody has sins and you'll let him in if he doesn't change. Now, God knows how to deliver the righteous from trials and he holds wicked for punishment. We need to fear God and give him respect. Please understand this. Um, I'm learning that the more suffering that Scott encounters, I encounter, we're not the only ones. Uh, there are people losing their lives for proclaiming the good news, for saying that Jesus is the Messiah, the Lord. And when we stand up for the Lord, we see that people will falsely claim that we are being bigots. We're, we're authors of confusion and hatred. We're, we're not in sync with the culture, the modern day culture today. And we're just aloof from reality. But the truth never changes. Scripture says, Jesus is saying yesterday, today, and forevermore. Why? Because he's the truth. The truth does not need to change. The truth never has to change his appearance. The truth is the truth. But lies always have to put another disguise or another uh, strategy to, to, to resemble the truth. To resemble the truth, but it can never be the truth. Time will tell that lies will be exposed. And people will see that the lie will never have a strong foundation. You need to have the truth. All right, now I'm, I'm looking forward to this one. This is now the Great Commission. Not the, just the twelve disciples, but now it's seventy-two men. And Jesus gives them the power and authority. Gives them uh, instructions. We went over this important command, please shake the dust off your feet. Don't get entangled in foolish arguments. Please. Please don't. It's, the devil's trying to keep you focused on arguments. But we need to focus on the commission. We're here to rescue lost souls. We're looking for God's children, just the way Samuel was looking for Israel's second king. And when he was looking among the brothers, he was, he was looking, Jesse invited him over and he was looking and he's looking. But Jesus, God was guiding him. Nope, not this one. No, not that tall one. No. And God said, man looks on the stature, the outward appearance, but I look upon the heart. So we've got to keep that in mind. God looks upon the heart. So don't get involved in foolish arguments. You're here to look, we're here to we're here to hold God's hand and he's going to show us where his children are. He said that to Paul, don't go over there. They're not going to listen to you. Go over here. So we have to cooperate with the Holy Spirit. Again, sound is very, is very similar. You hear the, the same instructions. It's very similar. Now he said, we hear this, the harvest is plentiful, but the workers are few. Ask the Lord of the harvest therefore to send our workers into his harvest field. Go, I'm sending you out like lambs among wolves. Do not take a purse or a bag or sandals and do not greet anyone on the road. Stay focused what he's trying to tell you. Focus on my, this commission I assigned you. Oh, Lyndon, you're a fanatic. You have no business preaching the good news. Focus, focus. Go over there. Hand out that message there. Go over there. Speak to this person. Give him a smile. Focus. They're only distractions. When you enter a house, first say peace to this house. If someone who promotes peace is there, your peace will rest on them. If not, stay there eating and drinking whatever they give you, for the worker deserves his wages. Do not move around from house to house. When you enter a town and are welcomed, eat what is offered to you. Heal the sick who are there and tell them the kingdom of God has come near to you. But when you enter a town and you're not welcome, go into its streets and say, even the dust of your town, we wipe from our feet as a warning to you. Yet be sure of this, the kingdom of God has come there. I tell you, it will be more bearable on that day for Saul than for that town. I know, um, I sent, you know, we send out invitations to this Bible study. We go out there and tell, we're playing the good news and we see that people don't take it seriously. That's when we need to shake the dust as a warning. Don't get entangled in foolish arguments. Stay focused on your commission. Follow the voice of your commanding officer. You're here to please your commanding officer and not people. Roll to you, Chorazin. Roll to you, Bath-Sater. For it is, for if the miracles that were performed in you had been performed in Tyre or Sidon, they would have repented long ago, sitting in sackcloth and ashes. But it will be more bearable for Tyre and Sidon at the judgment than for you. And you, Capronium, will you, um, will you be lifted to the heavens? No, you will go down to Hades. Whoever listens to you listens to me. Whoever rejects you rejects me. But whoever rejects me rejects him who sent me. So these statements, they help me. I, I'm not going to be apprehensive. I'm not going to be, oh, this person's going to think I'm crazy. Well, I'll come to that person. And then I, I feel reassured. If they're rejecting me, they're not rejecting me. They're rejecting Jesus. And if they reject Jesus, they're rejecting the father who sent him. The seventy-two returned with joy and said, Lord, even the demons submit to us in your name. He replied, I saw Satan fall like lightning from heaven. I've given you authority to trample on snakes and scorpions and to overcome all the power of the enemy. Nothing will harm you. Now, let's see the sign here. Let's go to Psalm ninety-one. I just want you to see how the Old Testament and the New Testament complement each other. Psalm ninety-one. I'll get the verse for you. Um, let's read here, um, Psalm ninety-one, verse thirteen. You will tread on the lion and the cobra. You will trample the great lion and the serpent. You are going to be overcoming false teachers and false prophets. These are the brood of vipers that John the Baptist is talking about. These are the brood of vipers that John the Baptist is talking about, you will overcome them. Even if they have false doctrine and they give you these false doctrines to drink, it will not affect you. You will handle these serpents. You'll have authority over them. Don't get foolish and think that you can handle poisonous snakes and think that if they bite you, you're not gonna die. And look at the words of God from a carnal perspective. You gotta look at it from s- a spirit perspective, a spiritual perspective. And that's why Jesus said, the words I speak to you are spirit. So they were astounded, they were amazed, they were in glee. Wow, we have authority to trample over snakes and scorpions and. And we overcome their powers of the enemy. But this is what Jesus said. However, do not rejoice that the spirits submit to you. But rejoice that your names are written in heaven. Meaning you are among the elect, the chosen of God. From kick, from Abel. To Jacob. To David. To Peter. To Paul. Rejoice that your names are written in heaven from the foundation of the world. At that time, Jesus, full of joy, through the Holy Spirit said. I just remember, we just, we just discussed about the revelation that Peter received. And Jesus said, this did not come from flesh and blood. Now you're gonna see, and this will open up your ears. I praise you, Father, Lord of heaven and earth, because you have hidden these things from the wise and learned. And revealed them to little children like Peter. Father, you revealed them. The identity of your son, you revealed to them. And this is what is your pleasure, this is what pleased you. You hid them from the scribes and the Pharisees and the Sadducees and the political figures of that time. And we see that the world is in darkness because they did not recognize the Messiah. It was purposely hidden from them to show humanity how much they have fallen away from God's grace. The moment we became self-conscious instead of God-conscious. The moment we thought that we needed physical clothes to be clothed. That's where we fell off. All we need to do is be clothed in God's presence and we are well sheltered and protected. Yes, Father, this is what you are pleased to do. All things have been committed to me by my Father. No one knows who the Son is except the Father, no one knows of who the Father is is except the Son. And those whom the Son chooses to reveal him. So if you see encounters, revelations, you see confirmations, this is a gift, this is Jesus manifesting himself. He's manifesting all this to you, the Son manifests the Father to you and the Father manifests the Son to you. Then he turned to his disciples and said privately, blessed are the eyes that see what you see. If I tell you. That many prophets and kings wanted to see what you see, but did not see. And to hear what you hear, but did not hear it. On one occasion, an expert of law. Stood to up to test Jesus. What must I do to inherit eternal life? How do you read it? God with all your heart and with all your soul and with all your strength and with all your mind. And love your neighbor as yourself. You've answered correctly. Do this and you will live. But he wanted to justify himself, so he asked Jesus, and who was my neighbor? In reply, Jesus said, a man was. Uh, from Jerusalem to Jericho. When he was attacked by robbers, they stripped him of his clothes, beat him and went away, leaving him half dead. A priest happened to be going down the same road. And when he saw the man, he passed by on the other side. Nor Levite, when he, when he came to the place and saw him pass by on the other side. First Samaritan as he traveled came where the man was, and when he saw him, he took pity on him. He went on, he went to him and bandaged his wounds, pouring an oil of wine. Or pu- pouring on oil and wine, and he put the man on his own donkey. Bought him in and in and took care of him. The next day he took out two denarii and gave them to the innkeeper. Look after him, he said, and when I return, I will reimburse you for an extra expense you may have. Which of these three do do you think was? A neighbor to the man who fell into the hands of the robbers and one third. I, uh, I admit. You understand it. It's a matter of living it, obeying it. Am I a good Samaritan? I remember I was rushing to work, I was running really, really late and that, uh, the moment I got off the F train, I was walking up, um. I was walking up forty seven. Going to Fifth Avenue. And I heard this groaning, this moaning, like, ah, ah, and and my my coworker, Dave Haney. We looked at each other, this is sound coming from. And then we saw this old man coming down and and I saw his right hand was, uh, his wrist was bleeding. And my first thought was like, man, this guy's gonna cause me, he's gonna. He's gonna cause me to be late, man, I'm I'm rushing, I'm like, ah, you know how New York is. He said, hey, this guy took my watch, and I mean, a guy took this watch so, I mean, with such force left him bleeding from the wrist. And I was like, I was humbled, I was like, oh my goodness, this guy's really in trouble. So, you know, we're looking for this guy who's running away with his watch. And, uh, fortunately someone said, hey, you know, we were talking with him, trying to comfort him. And and the guy said, hey, well, I I can take, I can take care of him from now on. And, uh, and in my heart, I was like, man, I'm I'm so humbled, man, cuz, you know, I I I wasn't really. Looking out to reach out this, reach out to help this old man, so we gotta be in check. I mean, um, we see that this Samaritan in this parable was prepared, he wa- he was looking to help. Should be our attitude, we should be proactive. Looking forward to helping somebody who's in need. Instead of, ah, hmm, you know, I see this guy with a sign and he he says he's hungry, ask somebody else to take care of it, or I, I don't got time, I. I don't have any money on me. But we should have some. I'm saying for myself. Have a few dollars in your car, you never know. Hey, whatever the case may be, be prepared. And this is what Jesus is talking about, we can't live this self-sufficient lifestyle. It doesn't breed joy. Breeds chaos. And disappointment. We're here to love God. Period. I don't care what Nobel Peace Prize you have earned. Your Hollywood Walker fame. If these measures are not. A part of your lifestyle, loving God and loving others, you have no foundation. You're just taking up space. As Jesus and his disciples were on their way, he came to a village where a woman named Martha opened her home to him. She had her sister, she had a sister called Mary, now these were the sisters of, uh. Lazarus. So. We see here, where Martha was distracted by all the preparations that had to be made. She came to him and asked, Lord, don't you care that my sister has left me to do all the work by myself? Tell her to help me. Martha, Martha, the Lord answered, you are worried and upset about many things. But few things are needed, or indeed only one. Mary has chosen what is better and will not be taken away from her. Wanna emphasize about the Sabbath again. Sabbath is Jesus. We see Martha as an illustration of us trying to be busybodies, trying to do this and trying to do that and trying to cater here and do this, be a busybody and. And do this and do this, and if I do this work, God's gonna recognize me, if I do this and I go over here and I go over there. But Scott's just staying home, chilling. Relaxing. Did you, do you know that when you sit still, you can hear that still gentle voice? And to commune with God. To be in his presence. To be at peace and have that shalom. Is the rest that God is talking about. You see, Adam and Eve were at rest with God. They did not need any sanctuary, they did not need any, need any sacrificial fish, didn't have a need, they need to have any sacrificial ceremonial offerings. They just were still. They walked with him, they talked with him, they had a beautiful intimate relationship with God. And it was not like he was somewhere. In another side of the universe, he was. That's what we should be after. His presence. You see, when John the Baptist was in prison, he started having doubts, he started thinking, oh, is this, is this the one? And, you know, we can mock and laugh, you know, didn't you just strongly insist that this is the Lamb of God before you baptize him? Are you mistaken or are you out of your mind? But that happens to us. Where we're not in the presence of God. We start to be busy, we start to rely on our own understanding, we start to think about other people's opinions and. And different approaches on life. And in the Bible say, you know, we'll, we refer to the proud or we go to those who worship idols. So we have to. Be at rest. Sit still, and I know it's still a challenge for me till this day. I can say, I'm gonna pray to God, I'm gonna sit still, I'm gonna be with God, I'm gonna talk with him, commune with him, tell him what's on my mind. And fall asleep. I kept, I can't do anything, I fall asleep, or sometimes I'm I'm about to pray so much, hey. He tried to strike up a conversation with me. So now you see why Jesus went to a mountain, a remote mountain. In privacy to get away from the crowd. So he can commune with the Father, just the way that Martha is communing with him. She was just in his presence. At rest. So you can be the busybody religious person and and get all the accolades and all the respect from human beings. But seek the praise of God. Rest it. Pray to him, and I kid you not. You're gonna realize your prayers and that it's not a one-way prayer, you're gonna hear his voice, he's gonna talk to you. He's gonna answer you. Through the word, through other people. And you're gonna say, wow. I was just praying that, I was just thinking that. Man, uh. I've talked, as uh Scott has mentioned before, we 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 talked, we compressed with each other over the week and, um. I'll send him something or he say, man. I I was just thinking that. Or vice versa, I'll say, Scott, this is crazy, I was just thinking that. When we are growing. We need to cling on to God. It's not by our own might, it's not by our own desire, but by his spirit. And the more and more we sit still, the more and more we have a stronger awareness of God's presence in our lives. So people on the outside might think, you're going through that and you're happy? You're going through this and you rejoice, you're going through that. And you don't think that this is a problem to you? What's wrong with you? You should be worried and stressed out. But we realize that having peace of the peace of God rests in our hearts. Is a peace that Jesus is talking about. The world can't give the peace the way Jesus does. That's why we have these parables, that's why we have these stories of him being in a storm. He promises his disciples, we're gonna go to the other side. And yes, there was a a a heavy squall, a storm, the waters coming over and it seemed the boat was gonna sink. But little do they realize. God is there. He's there. And he will rebuke the winds, he will calm the waves. And these are just illustrations of people, brutes of vibe, brutal vipers, people attacking you and. Saying you're a sinful person and they come into you like waves and through accusation after accusation. They try to throw you in prison, they try to ridicule you, they try to say, hey, he's no man of God, he's abandoning his family, he's doing this and. He's saying he's trying to look for this Jesus. These are the waves and this is. God is talking about, but there's only one God who can shut their mouths up. Especially the dreadful, ruthless, vicious accusers of the brethren. If you see yourself in that position, you're on the wrong side of the game. We need to understand that being in his presence is all we need. And we're gonna be tested, yeah? But we're gonna realize that these. Outer circumstances cannot affect the peace that's within us. We have the joy of his presence in our hearts. And as we look for him, we realize he's already there. And I have to confess. I don't know the ages of people here, but. Even secular movies can reflect that, I I I told Brother Scott, I was watching this movie as a kid and I I loved it, you know, we love the action and we know. Um, the the Barry Gordy's The Last Dragon in nineteen eighty five. And, uh, the main character Bruce Leroy. His master was leaving him. And he was gonna move him with his mu- his mother Miami, so now he says, you know, you're on a quest, you're on your own, you you're gonna find the master. Little do he did he know, as he's looking for the master, all over here, he's going over here, looking for a. A a a a fortune cookie, uh, making machine and he's just doesn't, it just doesn't click. But what I'm trying to drive at is the master was already in him. It was a matter of him finding out that the master was in him and it correlates in the Bible. We're looking, we think we gotta look over there and see God is in the mountain there, we gotta look and see if he's over there. He's already in you, the hope of glory, the mysterious treasure. So when we sit still and we realize, yes, we belong to him, he's living inside of us. The master's here. And whatever the master has to go through, we're not better than our master. We're not better than our teacher, we also gotta be hated, we also gotta be thrown in prison, we also gotta be ridiculed and and looked down upon and hated. But here's the good news. The glory that's revealed in us. Will overwhelm all. Shortcomings and all the dreadful circumstances that we experience here in this fleeting life. I wanna encourage you, I know it's, at times, I get overwhelmed. and the beauty of fellowship will, will be brighter to you. It'll be more of a comfort to you. You'll see that you're not the only one, you'll see that we're in the right direction and we can encourage each other through the painful trials. But we realize the word says, all things work for the good of those who are called according to his purpose. All things, all things work out for the good of those who love him and who are called according to his purpose. Those whom he predestined, he also called, and those whom he called, he also justified, and those whom he justified, he also glorified. So we can cling on to those words and, and have a confidence in the truth, no matter what the enemy's throwing at us. I want everybody to, um, understand you're not alone. Whatever you're facing, say thanks. It seems peculiar, but it, it does work and the more thankful you are, you'll see God's helping hand in your life. And he depend on him more and more like little children. And before we even make decisions, he wants us to come to him for counsel. Do you think it's right for me to buy this car? Do you think it's right for me to take this job, God? I'm asking you, cuz I know you have good advice. And that's the relationship that God wants for all of us. Brother Scott, if you have any, uh, for comments or anything that you want to share with us, I'm, I'm pretty much finished here.
Yes, thank you, brother. Um, just to pretty much add to what Brother Lyndon was saying and to, um, bring tonight's study to a close. Um, it's imperative that we go to the Father over all of our matters and all concerns, everything that concerns us. Because he is our loving Father, he does love us. Whatever rejoices us, rejoices him, whatever troubles us, as we just learned, the widow who lost her only son, it concerned our Lord. And she was weeping. Gaius, when he lost his daughter. The, um, family, friends and concerns, they were weeping. Beloved brethren, don't think that we've moved down here to the twenty-first century that Christ is far removed from us, he's as close to us today as he was to them back then. To go to him with everything, and I mean everything, you know, my daughter, she's only been here ten years. I've been here nearly sixty, but yet I still learn things from her and her prayers. My daughter don't say, Heavenly Father, um, bless me to have a car. She'll say, Father, and heaven bless me to have a blue car with the suede interior with a sunroof with this, with that, I mean, she, she prays all specifically. So beloved brethren, let's be specific and not generalize to our Father in the prayer. Um, the question that I ask is what are we doing with the truth that we're reading in God's word, beloved? Honestly, what are we doing with these truths? Because these are precious truths. And the reason why you know they're precious truths, Jesus says, you'll be hand of all men by my, by my name, Satan. That was written two thousand years ago. I told y'all, when I picked up the woman in the car, oh, she was singing my praises, she thought I was the best thing since they invented a machine to be able to slice bread. The minute I started playing my religious channels with our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, oh my gosh. She turned on the hate, I mean, she turned it up. She amped it up. So when the scriptures, we're learning the scriptures, know that the scriptures are truth, they're true. We're learning from Christ, we're learning from God, we're learning how to walk, we're learning how to talk, we're learning how to move, we're learning how to breathe. We're learning how to have our being pleasant in his sight. And um, just to bring this to a conclusion. Since we know the devastating consequences of sin, beloved brethren, let us diligently avoid every sin. Let us run with endurance the race that is set before us. Let us be faithful to our God, cuz he's already faithful to us. Let's not have the attitude, well, I'll do for him once he do's for me. He done for you before you even created. So the doing that we're doing, we should be doing for him. Once again, we want to bless all in attendance. Um, I consider this to be good news and I hope that y'all find it to be good news as well. Uh, starting with tonight and moving onward, our new study time will be seven P M. Once again, our new Bible study time will be seven P M. So like I said, that's a bit of good news to me. I'm grateful and thankful to our Heavenly Father for the adjustments. Uh, you guys are faithful, and I mean, you guys, I tell you the truth. If I'd never met a faithful crowd before, they probably said, well, Brother Scott, didn't you say you used to be a Jehovah's Witness and weren't they saying faithful? Yeah, well, they were faithful to the wrong cause. And they knew what the truth was, but yet they decided to be faithful to a wrong, false cause. Y'all are in turn being faithful to the true cause. And that is to the true and living God and Father of our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, the God and Father of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. Because like Lyndon and I say, we'll bring it to you, not our truths, not Sister Gail's truths, not Samina's truths, not Tariq's truths, not my family's truths, we'll bring it to y'all, his truths. And for y'all to show up each week as a constant, that shows that y'all love the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit. So may God bless you all, continue to watch over you. May y'all continue to seek his face, seek his will. Uh, over the last week, just heard of a lot of devastating news. Um, deaths and things of that nature. And they're heartbreaking and they're, they're really troubling. But just want y'all to know, you put your faith and trust in the Father, the Son and the Holy Spirit, and you'll be all right. Uh, does anyone have any questions, comments or concerns? Well, if we have no questions, comments and concerns, uh, nephew, what it calls? Giovanna wants to bring tonight's prayer, tonight's Bible study to a close in prayer. So Booboo? Go ahead, give that big, 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 big girl voice. Um, just bring everything to a prayer and keep in mind, anyone, we need to keep it moving.
Okay. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. See that my family, I had to stay safe and thank you for all the blessings and thank you for all the blessings that we have. And please forgive each and one of us of blessings and shortcomings. And please bless my dad to feel better from his little cold and please continue to heal. Excuse me. And please continue to heal mommy of her cold that she has too, please let none of us to get sick. And please keep Samina safe as she's going through troubling and where she lives. And thank you for allowing everyone, everyone to come to Bible study today. And please make sure, um, Auntie Gail's liver is healed in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Amen.